Good evening, I'd like to call tonight's regular Select Board meeting, October 5th, 2022. Leading to order at this time, it is 6:39. Yeah, are there any changes to the agenda at this time?
There are a number of things I'd like to put under F.
Okay, that's fine. Are they valuable things or are they just a...
Uh, no, they're just advisement and discussion.
Right, I have a couple as well. All right, any other maybe changes? You may now move on to the next item. Uh, actually, uh, next item is bid for road salt for the winter. Um, I do have a bid from American Rock Salt. And Amanda from Cargill, she misunderstood me. And she, instead of emailing me the amount, she was mailing me the amount. And I just checked my email and I left her a voicemail saying, can you email it as well as regularly mail it? And she didn't. So, I'm gonna have to hold off on it until we get the second bid on that. So, we're gonna table the, uh, number three. Waiting for a bid from Cargill. Uh, next is the members of the public. We have a representative from SEVIDS, uh, that would like to speak with us about the appropriations. And this is Meg, correct? Hi, Meg, welcome to, uh, Brookline. This is Stan Noga, our selectman, selectman Bruce Mello and myself, Dot Maggio. Uh, we'd love to hear what you have to say. I did provide to the selectmen an email of the handouts that you sent me.
Perfect. Okay, well, thank you so much for having me and giving me a few minutes. Um, so, um, just to start out with, can you hear me? Audio is good, okay? So, we send this letter around, um, each year to every town. Uh, there's 27 towns in the Wyndham region. Um, and Wyndham region has sort of been carved out. It also includes a couple of towns in Bennington County and one town that's in Windsor County, but that has been carved out for our sort of regional area, 27 towns. And we ask those towns to fund SEVIDS, which Economic Development people love, uh, have these acronyms. So, SEVIDS stands for Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies. And it looks like, um, yeah, so we send these letters around and we ask each town in the Wyndham region to fund us at $3 per person, um, which in Brookline is, uh, $1,590. And many towns will add that as part of their budget or as a separate appropriation if they have a appropriations policy. And it looks like my colleague, is Laura there?
Yes, Laura.
Great, oh, Laura's there, great. So she can correct me if I say anything wrong. But anyway, so we send, um, the appropriations requests around. So, I'd like to sort of start by giving the sort of, um, Cliff Notes. The question we get asked most often is, don't you work for BDCC? Why are you here asking for money for SEVIDS? And so, I'm gonna just explain that. Um, so BDCC is the organization you may know and has a lot of us out on the street. It's one of 12 regional development corporations in Vermont. Um, and we do have an annual contract with ACCD, the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, to handle all things related to economic development in the Wyndham region. So, SEVIDS is a separate organization that has its own budget and its own board, um, but it has no staff. So, what SEVIDS does is contracts with BDCC to carry out the strategies and programs that it designs. So, SEVIDS is there to create regional economic development strategies to help our whole region. BDCC then is contracted to run those programs in the street, on the street, and the projects and carry out that strategy insight throughout our region. So, we ask for that municipal funding for SEVIDS because it helps BDCC to design programs and move forward with intention in our work. So, when you see us BDCC employees out on the street, we are working on programs that SEVIDS has determined are important to the economic development of our entire region. So, you'll see, um, the programs and services update I gave you and it's, it has a lot of live links in it if you look at it online, but it talks about our main program areas, which is business assistance programming. I think that's what most people think of as that traditional economic development, helping businesses across our region grow, um, and become resilient. Um, we have micro lending programs and things like that for businesses. We also have workforce development programs, um, which operate in a couple of different ways. Um, we have the Pipelines and Pathways Program, which is in all the area high schools. So, any students, you know, from Brookline, for example, whether they choose to go to Leland and Gray or if they, even if they choose to, you know, if they go down to the Career Center in Brattleboro, they have access to the Pipelines and Pathways Program, which is designed to connect seniors and sort of help them make a plan and connect them to opportunities that exist in Vermont. We also have Welcoming Communities Program, which is, um, a program that has been working to bring new Americans into our region and connect them with employers and add to our workforce. Then we do, near and dear to my heart, we have community development programs. So, we have, um, Southern Vermont Economy Project, which is my project. I work across the entire Southern Vermont region to help build capacities in towns through trainings, um, that help people just elevate community programs, solve problems on a regional level, things like broadband access. Um, my program was there sort of at the beginning to connect people and connect them to resources that led to the formation of DV Fiber and Communications Union Districts. So, we do things like that. We help communities come together and solve big problems. Um, we also have a Community Facilities Technical Assistance Program, which helps towns and nonprofits improve community vibrancy through, um, applying, coming, they won't say it, let me say that better. They help qualified projects get ready to apply for USDA funding. So, basically, we use that program to help projects apply for loans and grants through the USDA and help them do any preparatory work they might do to get that, um, funding, which takes some capacity to manage. So, our program is there to help them manage that capacity. So, there's a lot of ways that we act in the community and we just, um, ask each town to contribute $3 per person to help us continue that programming. And then we sort of think of it as like a rising water raises all ships that, um, as we work across the region to improve economic conditions across the region, it'll help every town. So, you may say, hey, we're, you know, we don't have a lot of, you know, businesses in Brookline, but by working through, across the community, we're helping to just increase vibrancy, you know, help towns identify priority projects and, um, complete them. And we really work in a lot of different ways, small and big, in every community. So, so we're happy to see as many towns as possible support our work so that we can continue to, to grow and to help the entire region prosper. So, that's all I will say. If you have any questions, you can let me know. I know, um, Laura is, will talk about, um, the SEVIDS and the, um, EDD request that she has sent over, a letter of support request. Um, and she's, I look like you have annual reports there, which, um, we'll tell you more about the programs. It's sort of, that's the, got some nice visuals that, uh, talk about our work. And so that, we have a new annual report coming out momentarily, just not quite ready yet. But last, we'll give you a... Yes?
I have a question. Um, are you related or will work in any way with DV Fiber and the, uh, project that they have trying to get broadband out to the underserved communities? Do you have any connections with them?
Yeah, yes. So, uh, as, uh, Meg said, Meg said, um, her predecessor actually helped to bring people together before the CUDs were together in Southern Vermont, uh, just to learn about, you know, what, what's going on, what can we do. Uh, with the state legislation that came in, uh, we've been helpful and encouraging people to, um, working with the Wyndham Regional to help the DV Fiber kind of lift off. And now we are the, I, I hope that this is correct. I think we are the fiscal agent for DV Fiber. So, we have a pretty robust, uh, CFO and accountant and billing operations. So, that's one of the things that has been built up in BDCC over time to help these fiber projects.
All right, thank you.
Is that Laura Sodoy?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Hi, Peter.
I didn't have all the names, I couldn't see ya.
Okay, but did you want to continue on or with, with this or...
So, uh, it is very much related, what I want to speak to you about. Meg is asking you about the annual, uh, update and request for funding that we go to all the towns for. Uh, I am coming on, uh, an additional piece. So, where we get our longer term strategies is through this fiber planning process. It's a federally prescribed process, comprehensive economic development strategy. It's the development, that's the white, um, booklet that I gave to Laura. Uh, so that process was the second one that has been done in Wyndham County. That one encompasses the whole, uh, zone, which is Wyndham and Bennington counties. Uh, that plan was completed in 2019. Uh, the way that that plan is done, everything else, uh, and say, here's data. Here's the current data around population trends and what people are making, what types of jobs there are here. Uh, and, you know, here's what we think is happening. What do you all think is happening? Uh, we gather that information. We, uh, put together some goals for the region with the data and input that we get. We create strategies, bring that back out around, uh, to the public and then end up with this SENS, which we submit for approval to the Economic Development Initiative. A lot of places do that SENS simply so that, um, projects in the region are eligible for funding. So, so certain types of federal require before you can apply that there be a SENS. We also think it's really important because we're a bunch of small rural towns without county government, uh, to have some sort of cohesive, uh, panel between all of us that, you know, that we have created as a region. So, that's been going on. Uh, we have now been invited by the federal government to apply for designation in the zone, the Wyndham-Bennington region, to become an economic development strategy. Mm-hmm. And we, in order to apply to the other packages to apply, we need the majority, the towns in the zone, to support that, uh, request for designation. So, uh, I think Meg has sent you, uh, a, a letter on that. And I certainly can send you a draft from the town, uh, that the town could customize. So, it'd be ideal. I will do that. Uh, we'll do that. But that is the second piece of work. So, uh, we'll be undergoing the next SENS in 2024. We're hoping to apply for designation this winter. And, uh, it, we understand it takes somewhere between six and a half months.
On this, uh, paperwork that we got regarding the, uh, SENS, it says in number two, improve our physical infrastructure and make critical infrastructure improvements so that Southern Vermont is resident and business ready. What does that really mean?
So, we heard, um, we know in a bunch of our towns, the reason we're doing this, a bunch of our towns have very similar problems. So, broadband, need broadband is one. A lot of our towns need water, sure. All of them, but some of them, um, some of them are looking for sidewalks, wanting food bridges. Uh, and it's that type of, uh, that type of...
So, you work with injunction of Wyndham Regional for like bridges and things like that?
Well, we don't work on bridges. But we don't also, we don't implement all of the SENS. So, we have, uh, we, Wyndham Regional adopts the SENS as part of the regional plan, as does Bennington County Regional Plan Commission.
Okay.
Uh, and so, you know, it's, we do a process of how do we want to grow our communities and our regional economic economy? And then there are any number, there's projects are included in that. Uh, businesses will put projects in. Uh, you know, Meg is right now running a, annually, we update the projects that are in the SENS. Put out a call and say, do you have a project that can help implement SENS? People will send them in. It's a number of things, should be examples, DV Fiber has been in there multiple times. Um, and we include those and update those from all of those, uh, and, but we're not implementing. Right, so DV Fiber, they send us...
So, yeah, if you could send me a, a sample, a template of some sorts, so that I could... Any other members?
Most likely. I think for, uh, Meg, this probably would be applicable. We, along with the package, received, uh, an invoice dated, uh, 7/1/2021. I don't know if this is, this must be last year's for fiscal year 2022. So, you basically, we met to the town, uh, in July of each year, the early part of July, a request that you've already planned your expenses to be based upon for the upcoming fiscal year? Because we do our budget planning at the end of the year and oftentimes it turns out to be in January of the year, apparently, that, uh, coming up.
Your budget...
Yeah, so, to normally...
In your budget and have you vote on it. And then we will know, uh, after your voters vote on your budget, whether or not you have that as a separate article or included in your budget as a line item. We'll know, okay? The plan is in, we will include that and be a still funding for our budget for the coming year.
So, we're not...
Yeah, it's not.
Right. I was just looking at timing and the possibility of you needing more money than what we voted and didn't want to find that volume development. So, thank you for clarifying the difference.
Let's say, we send the requests, the initial requests usually in the summer to sort of start the process and do our annual Select Board visits and then it'll be placed on, you know, in a warning for town meeting in March. And if it's approved by the voters, then we'll send an invoice later in the summer for the, you know, for the following fiscal year. So, we understand that we're working ahead a year, we're on the municipal schedule.
Yeah, I recall right after our election and the warning, the, the vote, that somebody contacted me and wanted to know if, if the article passed. And the article did pass. And so, on July 1st is the fiscal year that that article, that that money was released. We've got...
So, when do you need the letter of endorsement, which is for, uh, from us?
It would be helpful, we could have it sometime in November. Um, we're, we're hoping to get everything, get all of the letters in place.
I'll put them on the follow-up.
Well, at a, probably our next one, I mean...
I'll have a letter and pass it around and we can also...
Without program appropriation at that point?
No, no, the letter of support.
Letter of support, appropriation.
There is a request for appropriation, read all of it.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. With me, uh, I need something for the minutes.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I need a piece of information for the minute. Um, Laura was talking about, uh, needing the majority of the towns to support the request for designation by the federal government as what?
The Economic Development District. Economic Development District.
Okay, thank you very much.
Got it.
Okay. All right, um, this is your annual, annual report.
I downloaded the 2021 off the internet this afternoon. It was, answer the one question. That's, that is a great place to see what we are doing with the announcement from all the towns. We leverage those spots pretty significantly into a lot of different programs.
Yeah, it's almost a mobility program. I think, uh, I know that BDCC is, I'm sure, up for it. They've been around a while and have their contacts already said so. Couple of good organizations working for it, sounds good.
Is there anything else that can help you with or did you like to share today? I didn't realize, we're not both Zoom, hanging in person. I was there, if you're hanging in person or Zoom, so I'm like... But you pulled it, I don't know, what did I forget?
Is there anything you want to ask of us that we had a thought? What's your most pressing, uh, issue around, uh, in terms of community development or economic development in Brookline? I've been for sure, it sounds like internet, maybe.
Well, I, I, I think, I mean, you support the DV Fiber program and we'd like to continue that. I mean, we...
I'm sorry, but I can't help it that yet.
Oh, Alexa, off.
We're done.
She always butts in, I don't know.
I got normal at home.
I, I mean, our concern is, uh, we still agree with the FEMA storm from, from last July and being a small community, we have bought up on all of our repairs. So, that's why I asked the infrastructure question.
Okay.
But, you know, are you getting any help from that? Yeah, it's very, it's very, it's very much a juggling act. It's like, it's, it's hard.
Supposedly roads and, and, is it mostly roads or the buildings?
Roads.
Yeah, growers, culvers, you know, those kinds of things. But I think...
We've had a hard job and there's a little bit of kind of creepiness of discussion in terms of there's a need for retention of younger people in the area. There's no housing for them and the types of jobs available are not high paying typically. So, it's hard enough to crack. And, uh, I've wondered about this particular topic of housing, uh, for a number of years, for the type of job that I have. And, uh, it, it, it's a hard nut to crack. I don't see how, I know there's a lot of players in the game. The market dictates what the costs are gonna be, you know, in terms of interest rates, the finances, which right now it's losing a number of people. Young people generally don't have a lot of money saved. They're dependent on inheritance or gifts to, to, to get their down payment and start. And then they're looking at jobs that don't pay them a lot. Uh, just as a source of input, not representing the board in terms of, we haven't talked about it, but it would almost seem to me that there's got to be a starting place where somehow there's a limit or cap put on the cost of construction and/or the cost of conversion, um, one type of thing. Perhaps a hotel in the area, a motel that hasn't made it, that may have the capability of taking those twelve units and making maybe six decent units out of it and make it affordable. It just, there's, there's, there's no, I, I haven't seen any concrete plan to, uh, bring that about in an organized fashion. And, and, and it looks like, you know, when you look at the current system, the players involved, it's all predicated on making money and setting prices are commission dependent. And you have a seller who wants to get the most they can. And it's almost an impossible mission.
No, 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 never impossible.
Okay, well, I can see that attitude, but, but I, I look at, how can this be done?
Oh, I think we figure on it that there has not been a plan brought forward that really looks at how we might do this. I can say that we have been unclear if we are the entity that should bring that forward, but it is clear to us now that it must be brought forward. Uh, and so, no one else is involved. You know, we're starting to, we're, we're working in that space. I don't know if Meg has done recently, but I know in the past, um, they have done a number of how to rock towns together and hows. I don't know if you could speak to that, Meg?
Well, actually, as it happens, um, I am planning a, um, housing workshop called, um, Local Housing Solutions for Local Housing Needs, um, on December 1st. It's gonna take place in Wilmington because that's a town that's actually doing quite a bit of work right now, um, on housing. So, they've got sort of materials and a, a housing walk within the community actually was just there. That's why I'm Zooming because I was, the geography didn't work. I was in Wilmington earlier. So, we're gonna hold it there so we can, they can show some of the work that they've been doing in their community. Um, at this point, in, in some ways, it's, it's sort of community by community because each community has different housing needs and different existing housing stock and a different mix of potential to create more housing. Um, but I'll make sure to send, um, an invite over for that. If someone from Brookline would like to, to come, we're gonna send the invite to all the towns. And this will be a workshop that's for towns at any stage. So, there'll be some towns that might be, have already kind of started this process of really looking at housing in their community. But we'll also have some sort of startup kits. We'll have someone from, um, Vermont Housing, um, VHFA, that they, they have a housing ready toolkit that they've put together to help towns get started in that process. And they'll actually be there to talk to towns who haven't, who are ready to start working on housing and sort of help give them like next steps, what can you do? There's, you know, you run across the limitations everywhere you turn in terms of, you know, we can't do a lot about financing and, and the way federal financing is distributed. But certainly within communities, there's steps that communities can take to get started. So, whether that's, you know, starting, making changes to zoning and promoting the fact that people can, can have accessory dwelling units, coming up with a plan to help give some funding maybe for those. There's some things that towns, other towns are already working on that we hope that people can learn from each other. So, I'll make sure that, um, I send that over to the Select Board for December 1st if someone is available to come. Um, and we'll certainly be able to share materials from that, even if someone can't come in person. But it is really valuable to get towns together and talk about, well, what, what are, what are people doing? Because it, it feels like a less insurmountable problem if everyone's sort of taking a piece and working on it, um, together. So, I'll make sure you get an invite to that.
That's...
We hope it doesn't snow.
But whatever this is worth, um, I wasn't, I wasn't banking for 15 years and made a number of mortgage loans when I was at the local institution and then was an appraiser. And it almost looked like the one main project that is sort of in place is through the housing trust, where they retain ownership in the land and sell the improvements via a 99-year arrangement, which typically gives, uh, an equity position of sorts to the, um, owner slash occupant with a fair distribution of, uh, value improvement or increase over the years through simply improvements made to the property as well as market appreciation. And, and that's the only viable thing that I see that could readily, it's already existing because we're looking at talking about these kits. But what is in the kit that tells them, this is how you actually do it, as opposed to, let's look at, see if they can come up with something. It's just, I've been looking for something that's already there to go because it's, it's a need that needs to happen now. And one other factor that what I don't see in the paper is we're looking at an aging population in this country. And when we talked about planning here in town five, six years ago and what we wanted the towns to be, there were a number of people on an age at that time who felt that their extra land beyond their typical five or 10 acres, they had 40 or 80 or 90, who wanted to retain that extra acreage to sell at the right time in their age as a retirement program in essence for them, that somehow tapping into that could occur and coupling it with a viable program that either is something that's new and hasn't been thought of yet or perhaps something through, uh, the housing trust and/or VHFA might, might be a, a, a good wave of a start.
And lots of, I know, retired folks and older folks definitely have shifted now to, we've also seen and it was to go, if they want to leave, you know, they'll be, they'll house, you know, place to move to, right?
Having great difficulty hearing.
Oh, she couldn't understand.
Yeah, I said, uh, a great point and we have heard similar discussions around an aging population and lack of suitable housing for folks that may want to downsize. Uh, and, you know, and in downsizing that, where they're leaving may be really important housing for someone who wants to commit, but there's no place for retirees or older folks. Uh, there's not, it's not a place as we would like for them to go. There are some...
All right, uh, in the interest of us moving forward in our, our, our agenda, is there anything else for, can you run? Thank you very, very, very good...
For the time of year.
Oh, great.
Do you have time to talk about the plans? No, I didn't. The grid is my GPS, I'm here. Oh, good.
Thank you again for Meg, thank you for kidding.
Thank Meg, thank you for having us.
Peter.
Hi, Meg. You're welcome to say, like... All right, we're gonna move on to the next item, your pay order. She want to take over the accounts payable warrant. Um, if you didn't notice, when she sent out the accounts payable, she actually attached all of the invoices that came with it. Uh, this, this has the invoices and the checks. Um, so, this is what went aside. If you just get the chance to look...
If you just get the chance to look.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so at this point, and then we'll discuss it because I know there was a concern uh, in the accounts payable. I'm going to make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant number two, three, one, four, dated October fifth, twenty twenty-two. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce Mello. And discussion before vote. There was a question about the uh, contract for the Parker Road repairs, which were, which the winning bid was for seven, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from A.S. Clark and Sons. And I know Stan said that we don't, we haven't sent out the contract, even though they, they were very efficient and got it all done already.
All right, was there an amount?
The amount of the uh, of the uh, work that I'm talking about now is two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars was billed to the town for work on the FEMA RFP on Parker Road, stream repair. They also.
Is that the accounts payable amount?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Yes, it is the accounts payable amount, not the total.
I did not give you the total, I'm sorry. The total for the accounts payable, twenty-three fourteen is for twenty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and two cents.
Thank you.
We're in discussion, we're in discussion about billing invoice receipt from A.S. Clark and Sons for two projects that the board voted to approve. One was for Parker Road and one was for Hill Road. Correct me if I'm wrong, Stan, but the Hill Road project was, is the one from, we, when the regional grant or the AOT grants?
The uh, part, the Hill Road project is for the grant, involves the grant that we're getting from B-Trans and Renner Regional Commission.
Okay. Have they been given a contract?
They have in fact been given a contract for that job and has not been returned to the town.
Okay. The contract, the RFP, the winning bid for the Par- Parker Road stream stabilization for two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, we did not get a contract out to them, correct?
Correct.
Uh, okay. I am going to, in discussion, ask that we, since the treasurer combined both sums, the two, twenty-seven fifty and the nineteen-nine hundred into one check totaling twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, I'm going to recommend that we hold mailing the check until contracts are received as we did with Larson and Lecter. We'd still be within our sixty day pay policy. And A.S. Clark and Sons, I'm sure will get back any paperwork readily. So I'd like to amend the motion of paying the twenty-four, four, thirty-three, oh, two, based upon the receipt of required contact paperwork. Okay? All right, any other discussion?
I, now that I know that it is done and that you in fact want a contract out, I will, I will, uh, I'm not going to go to the fair meeting tomorrow. I will produce the contract tomorrow and email it to Win Clark. And with it, if you'd like, I can include a cover letter that indicates and bring his attention to it, that we approved the amount they've already invoiced us for, subject to receipt of the executed contracts.
Perfect. And then I'll just put this post-it note on the check that says, hold check until Sanoga, how, how's that, Sanoga?
Yeah, sure.
Gets contract.
Both contracts, actually. Yeah, both will combine in one check. You would certainly need both anyway.
Uh, to be clear, there's an amendment on the table to make the motion to pay the full amount of the pay warrant. So, uh, amend to add.
Subject to the receipt.
Payment of twenty-two thousand, six fifty will be contingent upon receiving required, required paperwork.
Correct.
Thank you.
You got it, Peter?
Okay. All right. All right, any other items on, in the accounts payable other than that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the accounts payable twenty-three fourteen for twenty-four thousand, four hundred thirty-three dollars and two cents, awaiting all contracts, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously, I'll pass this around.
Can I take that for being the, on the amendment, all in favor and on the motion?
Yes, all in favor of me, yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant, twenty-three thirteen, dated September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of one thousand, six hundred, five dollars and eighteen cents. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Noga, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant, twenty-three thirteen, for one thousand, six hundred, five dollars and eighteen cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, I'll pass it around with signature.
Give me the date again on that one.
September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, excellent. Next up on our agenda is, uh, uh, Mr. Bill's Road Supervisor Report. What can you share with us?
At the last meeting, uh, basically just monitored the roads. Haven't, uh, had any major projects, uh, due to it's over by giving the list.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know where we were at, if there's been enough date on budget, uh, numbers yet.
As far as, uh, well, we had to talk to FEMA on Friday to find out a little bit more about getting an extension. And, and that will relieve us of, of some expenditures that would otherwise have to be spent now in the winter season. So that would relate to Friday.
Okay.
As far as the trees, I don't think they're ready to do it. As far as line painting, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. And if they're going to be able to do any crack ceiling. It requires some other things like the generator or the sign that, that needs to be replaced from, I think I told you, they put it on the side when they did the painting.
Yeah, yeah.
School bus stop ahead.
I, I picked it up and realizing that when there was residency on River Drive, there was kids getting on the bus at River Drive. And so I was going to take it and reestablish it.
Sure.
Closer to the.
Where they get on the bus, yeah, that makes sense.
The other thing I was going to see if the board would consider, hoping that be this meeting. But, um, purchasing maybe five to six denture clothes with the crushed stone that we used for winter thaw in wet season. I do have some left over from last season. I felt like it was really a, a great asset to the town to have it on hand for those kinds of year in need, covered and ready to use. So if we could, uh, consider that maybe before the, the pit will be closing during winter months and.
Is this the one in New Hampshire or is this the one up here?
This is the, this one by the Stritas and all industry.
Um, could you find out how much that would cost?
I can give the price and close your date, um, yeah?
Yes, and you could email me and, um, I'll put that on to the agenda in two weeks.
All right.
All right, for, for, uh, consideration for the board. We'll have a better idea about our finances at that time.
Okay, that is okay.
All right.
And then the last, uh, thing which I, then who inquire on, and, and I think we've already mentioned that you're talking with FEMA, but, um, the installation for the three foot diameter culvert was invoked that the culvert could get installed in four ground breezes.
I, that would be one of the things we will talk about. And I actually, I'm going to pass this out to, what Mark is referring to. What Mark is referring to here is, uh, during the storm event last year, there was a, uh, damage on Putney Mountain Road that can be mediated or mitigated with some grant money from FEMA. And, you know, I'll just look at this real quick. Okay, in which there would be three culverts that would be upsized. An eighteen inch culvert would be upsized to thirty-six inches. And two fifteen inch culverts would be upsized, um, to eighteen inches, yes. Okay, um, the grant, the FEMA mitigation grant would cover approximately twenty-some odd percent, about four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixteen cents based upon what they estimated the materials and work should cost based upon their FEMA charts. And which means that if you multiply that by four. Okay, the FEMA reimbursement for this mitigation would be approximately forty-seven hundred dollars, which is approximately twenty-five percent of what they estimate the cost to do the mitigation would, would be. So if you take the forty-seven hundred dollars and multiply it by four, the cost of the mitigation is about sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So on Friday, we're going to have a FEMA conference call. Mark, I have to get here back from Archie, myself and Guy, we're the four FEMA people, and talk with the state rep, the federal rep, and the project manager about these. If we can, I'm going to ask for an extension of time to get the mitigations done because our cutoff date is March twenty twenty-three. We're nowhere near complete on what we said needs to be done from the storm. So this is the one project that Mark would like to see done in October before the roads change because the area that this mitigation would protect has a lot more houses. And we just replaced the pavement that got washed out already this month. So this was an important project and so, so this was the one. I'm not sure how, how we can, I guess it would have to come on. I, I'm a little concerned about the timing because we'd have to get FEMA to talk on Friday. And then at the next board meeting, have an RFP based upon this, go into paper and then come back and it's going to be the end of the month. Yeah, I don't know. How, how, so let's just, so that's what's we're facing right now for this particular mitigation. Okay. Now. There is another mitigation.
And we have any response, have you referenced an extension previously? And did they respond to that by saying?
Ken said that I need to write to her. Yes, the, the answer is yes. Um, she, she had asked, I think the letter that I wrote. This, you know, I'm thinking, you want chronic copy? That's the letter I wrote about asking for the extension. And the response was, sounds good, get it on letterhead and let's talk about it on Friday.
Now, go to Steve, you're.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
So that is.
Now, we're not wasting time. We're actually, there's a degree of impairment in this and for that, it's plausible possibility.
Right. One, two. Now, did I give you a second? I want to give one to Mark, so I want to ask you guys to share this. Give one to Mark. This is the second mitigation area which they updated. I thought I had to extend, I probably found there one. It's different. Okay, yes, there is third, but you can have it, I have. So. We updated one. This one is for work mitigation up at Bennett Road on the other side of Putney Mountain, where we have a culvert that needs to be angle changed. And the FEMA has suggested that we add inlet and outlet concrete.
When it's called.
Walls. Okay, um, and again, based upon their research, they have in here estimated of the costs and such. And they would help to cover some of the costs. Again, it's in the, one, it's, um, cost estimate effectiveness calculator is hazard mitigation proposal cost is seventy-nine point three-two percent of the repair. And so again, this is something I need to have clarification on. And that's what Friday's meeting is. It's hard for me to, federal lingo is tough.
Yeah.
So again, this is another project that's important. And we don't want to lose finance to help support, to improve the situation, which could cause future damage. But I want to make sure we're going to have the money to do it and, and we have the time to do it. And if we can wait past the March deadline. And that's, I hate to take the time, but that, this has been on my mind for a while, so.
Yeah, uh, be able to force cement.
Force cement in the molds.
Have to take place after waiting.
Right. Right, so, um, that's why I'm going to ask for that. I don't know if those projects will get done as you wish.
Yeah.
However, the pavement is done up there.
Well, that's another.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
So I, I was, uh, working in town when the papers came to do the project. I spoke person to person with Fred Aldridge, so he got into company. And he was all set with everything. He had gotten, um, all the information through the other bidder. Uh, it was Jeff Marispin from Basin's paving. So I said, well, if you need anything, um, you come get me or call me. And so they, they did, uh, the bridge one day. The dice were grinding and doing the jagged edges up on Putney Mountain. They did those and he came back the next day to finish up. They did those and he came back the next day to finish up, so I was busy the next day um. I went up to inspect uh after he said he would finish. And he he did jagged edges plus a one lane for eighty feet. And he said his tonnage or pavement came out just a little bit over the estimated tonnage. So he he caught him and stunned. When I went to inspect, there's the last hundred feet that didn't get paid. And so I called him and told him that he wasn't done yet and he says, oh yeah, he says I did everything that was on the paperwork. So I I contacted Archie, Archie, he emailed me the the uh. The R the RFPs for the uh bids. And then I emailed him to Fred. And he had already moved his equipment out and it was such a small job for the amount of equipment moved in. He said he really didn't make any money on it. He was, his um. All the work that he has lined up is gonna take him through to the end of four weather. So it didn't look like he's gonna be able to come back and and correct what's wrong. And so I needed to get Archie and maybe the select board together to see where this went wrong um. I reading the the RFPs that were put out, to me, I can see it because I helped measure the distances. And I also learned that it um when the bids were sent to the town. For the that they might have made a mistake on one of the bid estimates. So I'm not sure who's involved or. Inflation and I I don't know if we received the bill.
No, we have not received the bill.
So so this company knows that there was more. And I I went up and I took ribbons and marked where the pavement used to end and you can also see where the pavement used to end. You can see damage lane um you know, so there's. There's an issue there.
So it's not, it's.
It's not complete, but are the numbers, what the numbers were for it. So we need to review with.
Um, did at any point, may I ask a question? Maybe more than one, uh at any point in time when the RFPs were solicited. Did Mr. Aldrich or any other representative from Allstate Trucking Construction uh cut? Meet with you to go over.
No, and you, does anybody that wants to bid somewhere along. So Ken, was the personal conveyance when we needed a a number for the. I called, he met me and we went up to the table, measured. And I explained to him, you know, all the repairs, we wrote them all down and wrote it up on the RFP here.
You made a comment that uh Allstate got their information from Bazin.
Right.
To determine how they were gonna bid it. How have you, what what basis do you have for saying that, did any, did either of them? Did Allstate or Bazin say that, or Bazin said, oh, you get it to Allstate, or Allstate said they got it from Bazin?
Um when I talked to Allstate, um I said, I said, if you need me to come out and show you anything. Uh I'll come out and show you, no, I'm I'm gonna talk with Jeff. And Jeff is the one who measured it all out, so I was in assumption that he was clear on what Jeff. Had originally wrote it up for the year, so I did not ever go and meet with him on site.
Never asked to meet with him on site.
No. Uh so he thought he was clear.
You do recall, I suspect, that there was a significant difference between Bazin's bid and Allstate's bid. And that subsequently, Mr. Aldrich admitted to making mistake and yes, missed the job. As he apparently told you, well, we lost money on this uh already or something to that effect, and yes, he did. Because he didn't bid right. But he acknowledged and I have emails.
Yeah, he uh so Allstate said that Bazin had made the the mistake on that incident.
Okay, I uh I probably should advise you and anyone else that needs to know this. And I have gone over this previously, that Bazin actually over calculated the cost of. That was a mistake and they were willing to reduce it by roughly two to four thousand dollars. So they were gonna reduce their bid, the error that Bazin made, that I think Mr. Aldrich is trying to take advantage of, is that there was a mistake. When in fact, the mistake was not in the way that Aldrich is hoping it is.
Okay.
It's actually a mistake that they had, in fact, and I asked Mr. Marsman to speak with the owner of Bazin. That he's not the owner, I injured basically two people, I forget Jeff, Jeff, I I forget which one it was, but the owner of the firm. Was asked by the fellow that I talked with to recalculate. There seems to be a tremendous difference in bid amount between yourselves and Allstate. And I just wanna make sure that you've got it right or that it is wrong and you need to make an adjustment downward. Within twenty four hours, the owner of Bazin, he emailed me back indicating that they needed to reduce their bid. Because they had over calculated with one of the, one of the. And I'm not sure if it was the materials or the labor aspect of it, but it was still further up the cost total. Uh thousands more than the than the dollar amount that was bid by Allstate. It was still like eleven versus twenty as opposed to eleven versus twenty four pounds. And reduced the amount of the pounds, so.
And this was for the Putney note?
I'm sorry, Peter, what?
Uh the connection has been too sketchy for me to get those details, so I'm just gonna say there was a discussion about this. Did that get through?
Anything we can do, Josh, on the audio?
I thought you said it was the connection.
There's a bad interference. It's still going on.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, this is not an easy to explain. Okay. Uh, well, you don't have it in front of me because I didn't realize this. Be an issue. I have it.
Is that the Bazin Brothers, the last one?
Bazin Brothers contract.
Have them on your email here that the RFPs.
I think the the right at this moment, the doll, the actual precise dollar amount is not the issue. Of the discrepancy between one bid versus the other. The fact of the matter is, we have one contractor who underbid the job and admitted it in writing. Way back when, and he told me on the phone that uh they were gonna have to take a hit for this job. Now, when it's in their view, complete, it's truly not complete. But I bet you it saved them the money that they were gonna lose. So the mo, there's a motive here to have an an issue within the error. When the discordant between the the parties involved clearly points out these facts. That there's a motivation for one company who did the job to not do it completely because they're gonna lose money. And now they're blaming it on the other firm that did the job apparently, and I'm guessing accurately. Because it was double checked by the owner, blaming them because there was a quote unquote mistake. And they never bothered themselves to verify. That's not professionalism, that's not the way that anyone should be doing business, I think, if this is push to shove. The legal case where we will win out, it's gonna cost Allstate more money.
Alright.
Cost of our attorney included.
Right, and it's not, we have not been invoiced for that job.
Right.
And so what you're saying is, when the invoice comes in, I'm to notify the treasurer that. Not to pay it, but to notify us and we will study that invoice.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll have to put that on on the side at this time, but.
I recall the RFP saying the.
Well, there was one section, uh I've got it here, but. There was like two hundred and forty feet of four foot wide and like, then there was one section of eighty feet. One lane road. And then there was a section eighty feet, uh a hundred feet, two lanes, hundred feet wide.
That's what's missing.
Two lanes, forty feet wide. Um which may fall into, when we replace this three foot diameter covert. Right beyond the end of the pavement, um there is some ledge issue. Now, the covert, it's in place at this time, it's a sloshed covert, which means it's oval, not round. So it's uh when we put in the larger covert, if that sets on ledge. The road may have to uh to to build us the right amount of gravel over the covert. Unless we take the ledge down.
Is that covert one of the FEMA ones?
It is one of them.
Did they make observation of that and need to like?
They took pictures, they looked in it, under it, around it, the other thing under mitigation is uh is it gonna need the? Questions we have to ask is, will it also need concrete?
Okay, so that would be part, tomorrow's discussion.
All this is to the replacement.
Okay.
So whether we hammer ledge. Or build the road up and I'm wondering if uh maybe holding off on the paving in case we do raise the road up.
Good thing anyway for next year.
But you know, the paving is still lacking feet away and uh there was a specific detail on the RFP. Once the pavement was removed and the new. Battle base to put in. The town would reconstruct with a greater level and then recreate. On the other hand, or because this all went too early, the RFP with Bazin, we did not do a site visit. So that's something to.
I I think this would be a learning tool to make a a learning observation in that. It may be an RFP, you know, maybe an inspection mandatory.
Mandatory to bid and anybody that wants to put a number, ask to be there, so they all ask the same questions or hear the same answers.
I'm not saying that that uh uh justifies them not doing the job correctly.
Right, right.
It's it's a matter of that being used as an excuse down the road doesn't materialize.
Right. And um and one of the other things I did wanted to add also was um being that the FEMA repairs. I don't know how you consider a large job, small job in your paving companies. I know there's a lot of equipment involved, a lot of manpower and one of the things that. Once we knew that they were coming in to pave and we talked about how bad the road was out along the west river. And we thought, well, if somebody gets the bid, this will be an incentive for them to come in, it would be the two jobs. You know, they're separate, but we thought one might get a a a job, a bid equipped by having more work. And then um I hadn't thought of it about, okay, it's gonna be two different numbers. And then there was two loads that we separated, so um.
Reason why we separated though was because it was a FEMA mitigation or FEMA repair from the storm. That was the only reason why we separated those RFPs.
Okay, yes.
And I might, I might add that um. The uh Allstate was not aware of it being a FEMA job. Because they they they, well, I'll show you how well they do business, uh I guess. They told me, and I believe it is an email that I have, that they bid low on the job that didn't get done right. Because they thought they were gonna get both jobs and they deliberately bid low thinking they were gonna get both of them and you do both at the same time.
Yeah.
So they they said too much already in the open here, which somehow indicates to me that. They they just didn't handle this appropriately professionally uh to in a just manner for themselves and the town.
And and it does say, I do have here the contract that they signed and and the request for proposal, you have a schedule be attached. Uh with with the blacktop and all that listed, so I think.
I I they're they're probably gonna play hard, they're probably gonna, you know, like a child on a playground and just punch somebody else in the mouth for no reason. The RFP's being saved into it or being run into the principal office, but um I I ultimately I think we'll be alright on this.
Yeah, okay.
That that might be my guess.
Alright, but you're saying you're not approving the, you're not approving the inspection based upon the RFP. You haven't been invoicing.
But it's not the total prepared yet, so uh needs to be reconsidered.
How are they gonna be notified? Who and how and when?
Wait till you get an invoice. Get an invoices, okay.
And I'm wondering if delaying that to after you get an invoice, knowing now that the job isn't satisfactory.
Oh, you need to write to them and say that we.
I mean, he's he's aware that was laughing, I I have talked with him and. I s, I emailed him the original RFP, sure, sure when the lakes. And I didn't hear that.
I am not an attorney, but I would suggest that we talk to an attorney. Because we know upfront, we did not meet standards and we don't know what are gonna be invoiced, maybe next week, maybe the week after, I don't know. They are a large company, they do a lot in the state of.
Oh, yeah.
Uh and and I guess the thing I'm. It's already been, the situation appears to be, and I don't mean to be negative about it, to be manipulated by them already. And I I'm wondering if not telling them right upfront in written format, not confrontational, but simply advising. This has not been done. So that uh A, we save ourselves time and and again, have the benefit of consultation with an attorney. You know it's not right, should we wait till the invoice, is that trick? So upfront, it's not done right, so they know they're not doing it.
We could approach it one of two ways, I can write a letter to the select board chair saying that at our meeting. The inspection was not approved for your work. And so unless there is a reduction in your invoice, which has yet to be received.
Okay.
We will need to.
So you're saying you're willing to negotiate for a lesser amount already upfront in your letter?
I don't know.
I wouldn't do that.
Alright, what would you suggest?
Simply inviting them to meet their obligation.
Um.
What it is.
I think that on the RFP, it should have been deadline for creation. Thinking we may have done by that date, so.
Well, that's gonna be another issue possibly, but it doesn't. How they did the job and the bill for.
Saying, therefore, billing and payment. To be, could be resolved, so now.
But I understand that they had already contacted you and advised you that they were gonna be here on the other twenty nine thirty.
Yeah.
And and I knew, but apparently went back and said, that's okay.
Yeah.
So that can be documented, we agreed to that, by verbal means, not written, so I don't know if we can now use that as an excuse. And one of the reasons why we're not gonna pay them, I think that's. I think that's where you're heading down, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, and the other thing that bothers me is the fact we did not do the site visit with.
But that's not our fault.
Right.
We were available and the RFP said, contact you for any information that's needed. So they were given proper warning, proper instruction, and then the case is any other RFP we've done. You have any question, speak with Mark, E. Mark Bills. Your phone number, your email, whatever, was available. They did not do that. They went outside the park, got information, they're now claiming, and I bet you when push comes to shove in any kind of legal context as to where they got their information from. They're got, if they were friends with that, and they're not gonna be after that. And also, they're, they're boxed into a corner, the idea that we have to bear in mind is handling it appropriately, so they don't get out of that corner and then do what
Okay, it does have a date, September first, completion date, does have Mark's phone number for, uh, questions and slip of work questions. Um, and again, the bids were done, handed in back in April, so they've had this backlog for a while. So, so again, you want a letter from the select board to the company saying, do you wanna write it? I don't know.
I, I'd be happy to if you like, but that'll help you, and, and I don't, it's unfair of you to do everything for the board and, and I, as I've said in the past, I believe you're.
The boundaries of the letter, if you would mind working on it and shooting it to me, I will confer and, and get it back, send back to them, okay?
I also, you know, I mean, the RFP is the road commissioner, he's been involved in, um, how to, how to go ahead and compete with.
That, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
If we're not gonna see a chart of be putting on.
Archie's been involved in paving the years, he's got more knowledge than.
How do you want that approach of him being by us, by you, or?
I would just sort of, if you don't mind, uh, inviting, uh, if have his input.
Okay, how do you, how, how, how do you convince me about that?
I don't.
If you want to do that, if you want me to do that as well, I.
You wanna tell Archie to, I'll, I'll warn Archie that we would like him to be involved in, uh.
And we're gonna be sharing with him a le- a letter with our dissatisfaction of the work that was performed.
Yeah.
And before it gets nailed for his input.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, that's, that's.
If you share that with Archie, is that all right?
That's a good idea, thank you.
Yeah, all right, excellent, yeah, and, and like I said, it was, it was written up in the newspaper accurately as well, so. Anything else more? That's an issue, but thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Are you, gonna, is there anything else you wanna go with them on? I'm sorry to sound like that, I just had a question for you before you finish.
Okay, um, yeah, we're just in hopes that we could, and I, we've already talked about, uh, maybe like bit clarification here in the, in the future. Uh, I'll, I'll check into the, uh, stone prices and get some estimates. Um, the, the covert purchase that took, uh, Putney Mountain, Mrs. Driveway Covert, that Sam Borne told. There was, uh, purchase, sales paperwork, uh, that was confusing. So Sam contacted me, uh, he was doing excavation work for, uh, Williams and Mr. Masters, bought a piece of property on Putney Mountain, just north of the power lines, um, the big power line on Putney Mountain, on the right. The covert, the driveway covert was rested out, I'd replaced all of them up to their, uh, all of them were new except this one, I had it in my sights to replace. Um, and Sam called and they had, uh, taken down the original structure on the property and they're building a new structure and wanted to install new driveway holders. So I contacted Archie and told him that Sam, uh, wanted permission to install new driveway holders. And with our Brookline driveway holder policy, um, after the first covert, the town replaces and maintains the covert after the first installation. So I contacted Sam and told him that the covert was under, uh, replacement by the town, that the town would pay for the culverts and Pete would wanted to, uh, do the installation. You know, just the culverts, not the, we're not the machine work for nothing, we just supplied the culverts and he thought that was great. So I was working out of town that day and I, I said, I don't have any fifteen inch driveway holders if you want to, uh, get to a WW and put my name on the slip as that I gave you permission. I thought that would work, but then I got an email from Judy and there was, uh, once they came through WW, they didn't say what it was for. So she was confused, she'd like to be clear on what the town is purchasing, named by home. So, uh, I contacted Sam to see if he had the receipts to the culverts and he said, he gets just an email, uh, uh, on stuff he buys at WW, so I told him I need clarification if he could, uh, somehow get the description of a purchase. So he was, uh, going to get me the paperwork in the description and dropped it off.
Did we not get a follow-up email from Judy saying that she got a paper one mailed and besides an email one? And she now saw it was for culverts, but yeah.
Yeah, this is coming. Yeah, I, I realize now that we'd be very confusing at the time, I didn't think of that, I just, uh.
Yeah, I, I.
An easy fix, uh.
Playing devil's advocate, the statute which, uh, or our policy, whichever has supervisory control over the western, is it with towns? Uh, how, how, to what degree is a town required to replace or deal with driveway culverts after the first one?
According to Archie, the policy is after the first one, the town's responsible.
For the labor and the material?
Uh, that.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm afraid of.
I mean, I, Sam was working for the landlord and we supplied the culprit. So maybe there should be clarification in the policy to describe whether that's our, on our going or. But I was under the assumption that Sam's working for the landlord, that he was working to install for the landlord, we supplied, sorry, we supplied that, that.
So we'll need to review the covert policy.
Yeah.
All right, not putting it on my agenda, that would be something that exists.
I think it would be a good clarification in the future.
All right, so that will make things clear.
Okay.
Hmm. Anything else more?
Um, I missed the over meeting with the Act Board.
Oh.
Uh, I was working out of town that day, but I understand that the Act Board is now in Townsend.
Yes.
There, I'm the assumption that it's probably Brookline as well.
I'm gonna bring that up during our, I, I can bring it up right now, across the list if you want, we've got, um, uh, the Act Board is confirmed in Townsend and it goes on to talk about planning resources for Vermont Towns to prepare for and manage the impact of the Emerald Act Board and the loss of ash trees in the communities. It goes on to say that we might need to consider putting in our budget in the next year costs that would be as needed to remove ash trees and replant other trees in there instead, so that we do not destabilize soils with the removal of trees.
I think we're fortunate in a small town because we don't have a lot of, uh, town trees that are specifically in areas where they do need to be replaced. I think ours is a tapey hazards that.
Needs to be removed or replaced. So that would be something for our budget.
I know that we did step aside in the budget, I think there was a six hundred allotment for tree removal, like three or four years back. Um, but, you know, six hundred dollars, maybe.
I, I know, okay, yes.
I, I was in hopes at some point, maybe that, that there would be grants money available for.
I'm thinking based upon this, or might be at some point. Um, and this is from the Vermont Urban and Community Forestry Program, U N extension. So, um, I, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write to him and ask if there weren't any grants, they have an email address, so I will.
I mean, except the large disaster, you would almost think that , uh, under disasters, they can give these funding available.
All right.
I mean, uh, one tree, it, you know, out of some towns have hundreds.
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll email the person who sent out that letter and see if there are gonna be some grant money coming down so that we can be better prepared for our budget season.
Okay, that's it.
Sam, did you ever, do you have any other questions?
Yes, uh, last week I emailed, uh, the select board, the entire, we emailed from Deb, Chris, about batteries being in the river below the, the bridge and intersection, Putney Mountain, grasses were grown. I, yesterday morning, took a look over the edge, I didn't see it. Does that mean you've already retrieved them?
No, I, I, I didn't have it here on my list to toss out, you know. And I stopped, it was so early, it was plain to dark and I, I couldn't see what was described. I went back again and I still didn't see them on a brighter day. And I was under the assumption that maybe somebody, uh, waved in and picked them up all the way.
I will ask her where she specifically saw them.
Okay.
I, I did not get down into the sides and look underneath.
Right.
I don't know where she was inside. But her description was that when you look over the side, you can see batteries, plural, in the water, and she was conservative.
Awful.
And I think, I think it was, yeah.
I'll have, I'm gonna look back in and, I don't do all that at all.
So I didn't like that, I can email her and say, where did you see them? We can't find them.
She may have, uh, maybe for them, but I, I wasn't, I'm sure she did.
Yeah, that's interesting, that's awful, battery.
Yeah, yeah, in the water. All breaking, uh, and then I, I guess while we're on top of there, I, I was going through Ellenware Road this morning and took a picture. It was, it happened either early that morning or late evening because the tracks were still visible. Somebody hooked a chain on a new base that the landlord put to block people from trespassing and uh, bent the post, bent the gate, broke the concrete and, uh, left tire marks, you know, spinning, weightless ruts behind.
Similar to the protest of putting the boulders in the road to prevent traffic, so it's the same kind of a protest.
Yeah, it was an eyesight distance from the other incident missing today.
One other common observation, when I was on vacation last week, we went to a, a salad store in Maine. They had these huge rolls of reflective white tape that were seven fifty. We bought one. And, and the, the, one of the reasons I thought of it was because of the arrow at the end of the green bridge, it's coming in the pipeline. Somebody's just painted over the black arrow. I'm wondering if, if we, I either donated some of that white tape, we went out and bought some for a few couple bucks and just white an arrow within that black space. So somebody coming, it's a cheap fix and wants to paint it over again and just put some more up for two dollars. You know, as opposed to having a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars for a sign of the means.
Right, there are a couple of them, all right.
Yeah, that was the one that had graffiti and somebody sprayed over it.
Uh-huh, so cut the words out, but read it all black, it's the arrow. That's great, I do the same thing when you see something on sale, that.
Yeah. Yeah, in this, the book, you can buy a reflective tape, but it's, it's rather.
Now, this, they had rolls and rolls of that, seven dollars and fifty cents. That, we just couldn't, that hasn't, my goodness.
Yeah.
But I was thinking the other day, as I'm coming in the town and saw that, I keep seeing it every time I come. It's got, it's a quick, easy fix, that, that one of us is going to, to put that up, it's fifteen minutes, you're gone and to the next sign.
Yeah.
All right, that would be, I hope that's a, you want. All right, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, highways and grants.
Okay, uh, there was one question, uh, I probably should make this easy for Peter. The amount of the aid, uh, uh, grant and aids grant for the repair on Hill Road is six thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, now that the work is done, we need to apply for reimbursement. One of the things that's required is a invoice. So the fact that they sent us an invoice, and I believe you gave me a copy of it here.
Yes.
That, that will satisfy those two things. One of the other things I noticed that isn't done on his bill, there, there has to be a price for the material. Well, if there's more than one material, it has to be itemized. The labor has to be itemized. And the equipment rental or cost for the job has to be itemized in order to get reimbursed. So there may even be the need to send a cans and check that would prove that we paid them, like we had to for the leaf mower. I don't know about that, there's no instruction that indicates that that is required. But I will tomorrow email the lady at Vermont that's responsible, and D Trans is responsible for this, and ask her if she does need a copy of the cans and check.
In which case we'll have to have the check to be rewritten because it's combined with Parker Road check.
Uh, yeah, that's true, I'm glad, glad you thought that, that they need to be into separate checks.
You could write it up, uh.
Because it's in the grant, it's not down pay.
Yeah, okay.
I can appreciate the figures department wanting to make them easy, but.
Weird.
Yeah, and, uh, and then you and I, or one of us, has to take the appropriate photos from the same location that Jeff Nugent took them from before the work was done. We're gonna have to get Jeff's photos and couple them with your, my photos or whoever else might wanna do that. So that all four photos are available to D Trans.
Right.
We have to file it to D Trans. Uh, Wyndham Regional no longer has the responsibility of completing that paperwork or they add up until this point, apparently been doing that.
Yeah.
So it's all up to us, Mark and myself, or whoever else might wanna do it. Uh, but they're willing to show us how to do it, and Jeff has actually sent me an email saying if we're stumped this time through, he'd be willing to help us do the paperwork if need be. So we've got options. Um, one of the letters, one of the concerns we had is how much time were they gonna allow this to be done? Well, it was certainly completed apparently on or by the third. Uh, they would like the paperwork at our earliest convenience. And the last date that they will even deal with this grant situation is the thirty first of December of two thousand and two. So I think we've got two, three weeks, even if we get the paperwork together by the middle of November, we'll be well within it. What it does mean, or the longer we wait, the longer we wait for our reimbursement of the six thousand seven hundred dollars.
So you're saying right now that we need to contact Archie Clark and tell him that he needs to re- redo his invoice for the Hill Road because of the grant stipulations and take pictures.
We'll take the pictures.
We'll take the pictures, uh, but we, we need to contact Jeff Nugent, you said?
Uh, Jeff Nugent has offered to help us if we want him to help.
He took the first four pictures?
Jeff Nugent took the first pictures when he was showing Mark what he wanted done on that road segment. So we need to couple, and I believe, I don't know if that, you know, I don't recall, if, it's one segment or whether that repair work going past the Simonese driveway across from Dan Tower, whether that is a new segment. Because this work that's required is by segment.
By segment, yes. And I know it started with the streets, uh, the sign above.
I mean, I get the map, so we can look, I can look and see where it is.
What can, what, what can I do to help you get this done?
Well, uh, yeah.
I would like to, I would like to proceed.
I'm totally open, whoever wants to be of help, uh. I have no problem saying to Archie, you got your invoice, however, this is a, a grants and aid project, and as he probably already knows, just forgot, they need a breakdown, I'm gonna send him a copy of the form. They need a breakdown, I'm gonna send him a copy of the form.
It's windy, it's windy, because we're building.
I'll say, this is how it needs to be broken down, by segment. And I, I can look at my map before I send that tomorrow, uh, at one with the other country. Letting him know that, oh, by the way, there should be feet of another, and we need to know what the cost of that is, broken out from the total nineteen-nine. So that we have a bill for each segment of the three categories, materials, equipment, cost, and labor cost.
Alright.
And then I wanna know the hours worked at forty-five dollars an hour, or fifty dollars an hour, for each of the people involved, flagger, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So all of that's gonna be there, broken out.
Alright, so you'll write, if there's anything, and I can help.
Thanks, Val, very kind.
Alright. Very good. Anything else?
Uh, yes, we're, we're, yeah, I was doing it, uh. Yeah, uh, okay, yeah, that's, that's the one on that, I guess now that I know that we can submit the contract out, the conclusion. Uh, I guess my, uh, it's not a grant, but it did involve me getting out a contract, is that. Uh, when I sent Mr. Larson the contract for the work at the school to provide the hookup and GFIs for these bases, uh, E-pumps. Uh, I affixed my digitized signature to a select board slot that's used the last one on the form for myself. And I asked, I think I hopefully sent to you both, that you both sign it, a copy of that, and then send the completed copy with all of our signatures and his, which was fixed to the one he scanned and sent to me, so that he'd have for his file, a, a fully signed copy of the signature papers, is that, how were we on that?
I went to the mailbox to see if, last night when I received, because I thought it was gonna come in Monday, but I did, it's like, you know, Tuesday night. And I did not see the Larson contract.
I, you know, that too, everybody, um, who work here, I did.
He said, he said.
Last, last week.
He said he filled everything out, I told him to.
He, he signed his portion, he's ready to go, I told you, he can, he can check it out. Fantastic, that's good.
But I didn't, I did not.
So, what I can do when I go home tonight, and I can come in tomorrow, is put in the Larson folder here on the left cabinet in the front of the top drawer, that signed page, and either both of you.
Put it in signs, okay.
At your convenience, sign it.
Actually, could you put it in the mailbox?
Does it go like?
It's, yeah.
Select board.
If you wouldn't mind, I, I, okay, I apologize for that, okay. I'm, I remember there was some things, I wanna. I understand I was gonna come in on Monday and do it, then Monday became Tuesday.
See, I also should offer one other observation, and I don't mean this to sound critical or being critical. But since we are in a process that some of these people, the vendors, haven't apparently encountered before in this office from, from this town. Uh, it's a new thing for them, and it's kind of a new thing for us. Mr. Larson made it very apparent, I mean, he would be, I asked him two points to send it back, and he did. My suspicion was, he was afraid, he didn't know what he was getting into, he probably didn't understand it, it's lengthy, it was legal, et cetera, et cetera. And when he did finally send the page, he said he'd never been required to do this before. So, I guess, we can't respond to how other towns might do things, but our process is well-founded, legal, and we've got a good system in place, it's solid. Because when we're dealing with people, just remind them, there, there is a contract that doesn't need to be executed. So you will get it, and it's standard fare, most towns do it, if you find one that doesn't, that's their issue, not ours, for protecting our people.
And one of the things that I will bring up again is, well, this is something that an administrative assistant would follow, be on, and be responsible for, not the selectmen doing the work, but overseeing the direction of the work. And it would make everyone's life a little bit easier, and I, that's why we're con, we're, we're double task, triple tasking ourselves, but thank you very much.
So that this is clear, I'm gonna bring in the signed copy of both of the signature papers, and if it is in the selectmen's box, you both will take responsibility for signing your signatures, and is one of you gonna take responsibility for filing and interfile, and just either scanning or emailing it to them, or mail it, our company?
Oh, this time. I can, tomorrow, I'll be back here at four o'clock. Keep me out of the law.
Of course.
On time tomorrow, I'm here at four o'clock with the cleaning guy, I can do the final signing. Yes, for the metal, I need to provide a stack, or I can stay on there, which one can put a copy of the.
Lots of.
Okay. Sign in. Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect.
Oh, okay, next one, Wyndham Regional Solid Sand Shed Project. Uh, as far as I can tell, we're on hold. Uh, in terms of where we're going, I, I, I didn't know if anyone wanted or felt hesitant about me calling or sneak calling the boards of our people and finding out what the, the shed was. I have no problem going in.
Alright.
Uh, I know, I know Jackie, she's wonderful. I'm not saying she's gonna tell secrets that shouldn't be told, but there's nothing, there, there's no reason to hide it.
Right.
If they found that it's eight hundred thousand and nine hundred thousand, that would be nice for us to know. Because we have been approached, I'm gonna look at timelines, when we are asked about whether we were going to continue, it appears, having info that they declined going any further with theirs, Wyndham Regional might have tried to decide whether we were gonna do the same thing.
I, I believe they now have a new. Town clerk.
Oh, really? Oh, good for her, she was fantastic. I hope the new one is, is as good as she was. Okay, so the other thing was, we have an outstanding contract with Wyndham Regional. And I, based on the last discussion I had with the, with the board, I indicated I'd email, uh, Marv O and, and ask, you know, what chain was it pending, they were recommending, whatever, I did do that, have not heard that, I did not have a chance today to follow up, trying to catch up after having all of last week off, the things that I needed to do this week. So, I don't know what the status is, we can tailor to the next meeting.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Next, anything else? Now we can move on to the building commissioner.
Hey, let's, let's, if anybody has any questions, I have nothing.
I, I have a couple of questions, okay. Uh, hot water heater in the meeting house. Was there a concern about a breaker?
He replaced it, it was, uh, it was a bad breaker, and, and he replaced it.
It's been replaced because.
A break.
Okay, because it was working at one point, and then it wasn't working, and then it was working, and so I wanted to ask you about that.
Yeah, I always fix it.
Okay. Should we contact the plumber to turn the water off in the building at this time?
Because they're done, yeah.
Yes.
Like, almost done.
Did you call and set that up?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other.
Because they're done, done. The last one, the last one was last weekend.
Our meeting is, yeah, our meeting is here, yeah.
Last weekend was.
Correct, open house, that one.
Okay.
Uh, and last but not least, the sort of building commissioner report, I just wanted to let you know that the, uh, Brookline Meeting House Committee contacted the painter, Glenn Bostick, understanding his schedule has run out, and that his contract shouldn't have had the sequel painted by the fifteenth. We are awaiting his consideration of rescheduling for the same amount in the, for painting the sequel in the spring. So more to come, we'll need information, so that's what.
This is fifteenth, this is a week from Saturday.
Correct, I mean, it would take them four days to do it, but, uh, it, the, the problem is getting the, the things organized, and then a schedule we had previous, a deeper, a more complicated schedule. So we're just waiting on to let you know on that. Okay, um, nothing else?
No.
Alright, town clerk, I did not get a report from the town clerk. Um, I'll quickly go through my select board report. Um, I know we talked about setting a time and a date for an executive, a special select board meeting within executive session in order to just, to deal, deal with job performances, evaluations, benefits, and descriptions. Can we look at the calendar and, and come up with any kind of date that would work for, for the select board?
So not to do it in a regular select board meeting.
Correct.
I understand, well, you only have two people that will participate, and they're doing a second meeting, not a special meeting, is that my understanding of things?
Would you still be able to, I know you.
I can throw you from there.
Okay.
Forget that. I have work that I've been putting on for a long, long time, that's getting done.
Alright, so no, so.
It's getting done, but it's, but I'm a woman man, so that's what that's.
Okay, um.
Maybe after a month, I might be able to clear a way to, just to move away, but.
I don't think, in a special meeting, we would not be doing any voting and that, so we could still have a, oh. I, I could still provide some information, I've been collecting about jobs and some reason, administrative assistance and stuff, I didn't, uh, I don't know. So it would just not, not consider it at this time.
I, I think we ought to at some point, because we're, this would be an opportune time before we start talking budgets, to decide how we're gonna view things, to couple budgets and then personnel review, and I'm not sure whether this is about everybody in the town, or.
Well, that's what I wanted, that's what I wanted.
But there's only one small facet of the entire budget that's holding itself, we're starting to do the budget.
No, it's true.
It usually takes, it usually takes about a part of six to eight weeks to get all the budgeting, this and that, and all.
Hard work to have that cut down, it's very short.
That'll be nice.
Yeah.
You done about the budget board?
Yeah.
Well, now we have a wonderful treasure, hopefully permanently appointed next spring. Uh, that should help us out a lot.
Um, it, Sam, if you would be willing, uh, to, the two of us who are not being in a corner, we can certainly sit down and, and take research that I've collected, and make a more concise presentation during an open meeting, and if necessarily go into an executive at another time. Would you like, when you have time, should you possibly work with me?
Yeah, I, I, as I said, I, you know, I can, it's not fair, you know, listen to everything, I'm willing to share, and every night, what it is.
Sorry, so then, I'll be in touch, I'll, I'll start sharing a folder with everybody, these papers on jobs and so on, so forth, and what I had.
I, I would like to add, though, that one of the topics that I think is as important, and, and frankly, at this time, it's more important, is isolating what it is that we need to get going to mark, and how it needs to happen. And that's, and, and as long as I brought that up, I have contacted a, uh, I've left a message for a return call, and we'll call them tomorrow, to get information on another potential avenue for use. Looking at things that I might have mentioned at the last meeting, but have to not get into detail, to allow a smooth, a potentially smooth, uh, process to give Mark what it was that was intended, or some modified version that, uh, is satisfactory to everybody.
Alright.
So, I don't know, would we wanna co-join that concept?
Let's co-join it, get together, knock out some of the, the rough stops, and then we'll have a smoother presentation when we're ready. There's one in the form, I'm gonna yell that, perfect, alright, so we'll get, we'll, we'll find some, oh, now I have a hundred teeth.
Oh, yes.
Um, so, okay, so that, that would be to be determined or tabled at this time in the executive session.
Well, if you wanna do a work, be unflexible almost any time, and if you weren't looking for a definite date, I think we ought to do either November second and November sixth.
Oh, alright, I was even thinking.
At a regular meeting, we have to. Because at some point, after we do our initial review, there's gotta be a presentation with a version that's presentable to public.
Yeah, I was saying sometime in October that we could get together and, and, and make a.
Sorry, I don't know the answer to this one, but I'm learning.
Go home. Alright, well, as we develop our, our, our agenda going forward later on this month, and in November, we can add that to it. Uh, very quickly, last couple of things I have on here, uh, there is. Legal posting of Act two fifty, Interfire, Section G, I emailed it to you all, that I will ask for the town clerk, I guess, to post it, I'm not sure exactly what they expected us to do.
Well, you wanna sum up synopsis of it?
Yes.
In thirty seconds or less?
Yes.
Okay. It's been submitted to the Act two fifty people, I think the Springfield office.
Right.
It is under review.
Right.
It may know decisions, and it simply is asking for an extension up to five, uh, fifty months. Uh, not five times two years, but six, fifty months.
Right.
For them to build the, uh, three additional structures. And I think at some point, when that entity, the person that's handling it, and then a person designated, designated one, that's, I'm assuming they'll approve it, it was originally, they, they're using COVID nineteen as a reason that it was not fully developed in the first place. Uh, I suspect it'll be approved, and at that point, I assume there'll be hearings required of, of others and town, et cetera, to determine whether or not, uh, there's any kind of valid objection to it.
So what do I do with this?
That needs to be posted on the bulletin board here in the town office.
Okay. That's what I.
Now, I think it came originally from Guy, so if he read it, it, you know that I got, I think, was sent from Guy.
Right.
Or he got it, and if he's read it, he should already have it on the bulletin.
I don't know, I don't think so, but I brought it.
Okay.
Alright, that's what I thought it needed to be. Alright, last, uh, public hearing will be a Zoom, just wanted to let you know about the bylaws of mending public hearing notice. I put the information for October thirteenth, the Zoom link, if anyone is interested in attending that, that, that information is there. Uh, the other item I want from my select board report, FEMA, I just wanted to let you know that we're looking at nine thirty on Friday to discuss the conference call and those mitigation projects that we talked about, and we're also looking for an extension of the time past the March twenty twenty-three deadline. Um.
And your, and your, just a, a question, I guess, of you and Mark and Guy, perhaps. Would you feel it to be of any benefit, in light of the way that's gone on? And now, the FEMA people are dealing with Florida and eastern, and states and cities up and down the eastern seaboard. Would there be any benefit to contacting, uh, our, the three representatives that we currently have, and asking for some kind of intervention to occur on this issue? Bernie Sanders, Walt Welch, and the other person.
Well, I'm not sure why we would intervention and not respect.
Well, if we have no date, we're gonna get money, correct?
We've got any money yet.
That's right. So that's all I'm talking about, is it looks like there, there is a, a process they have, which is forever.
That is what our meeting on Friday will also include, Kim Parnesi is there, she's the one who would be giving us the extension, and she is the state representative who the FEMA would be sending the money to, and she would be able to identify where it's stuck. And so that's part of that.
We're doing a second.
Well, if, if they're, if they're doing their job right, they already have it.
Good thing.
And, uh, so the question is, uh, you know, I, I don't mean to be critical of anybody, and you're more involved with them than I am. But there, I understand we're not the only town, this is initially, and, and it would just seem to me that we're gonna do one of two things by entering into a session with them about, should we talk to our legislators? Because either they're gonna get upset, and they're gonna take longer, or they're gonna realize that, uh, oh, we're gonna have issues with, uh, legislators, maybe we ought to accelerate somewhere, so there's a, the extremes are those two. And I, I don't know if you have enough feel for them, and know whether they're sensitive to that kind of thing, or not.
I'll know more tomorrow, uh, Friday, when I, I'm.
How much money do we expend that we haven't gotten back?
Probably, probably a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
About a hundred.
Hundred, hundred, wow, where the hell is that gonna come from?
Okay, um, that's, that's why I'm saying we're tight, because.
Well, I know.
And I've got these other, other projects, so. We're gonna be having, of the stabilization funds to, to cover that, once we get some FEMA.
I don't know how it's lost, right?
I'm sitting by my.
I wonder if, yes, um. Okay, okay, okay. It would have been funny to, 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 I've heard that they're, just did their last large over installation. I'm wondering if they have received any payment as of yet.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna be able to make phone calls to some different towns, if you wanted to do that, that'd be fine, we'll get that to my attention tomorrow morning, by Friday, but, um, well, I'm just worried, I'm just worried about going back to town. Okay, I'm gonna move on, because we're running late here. Um. Uh, any other reports or discussions from the select board? Before I let that out, I was gonna say that I'm having an open house at the Round School House on Saturday from approximately ten thirty to one, one thirty. Um, and the buildings are gonna be cleaned on Thursday as well, so Lori, uh, now is gonna help me out a little bit. We've been touchy with the initial part of the open house, but just, I'll advertise it for more of it coming to town, you know. Alright, and well, I'm gonna have to postpone doing the garden until the springtime.
Let me see.
Open house. I'll repeat it, I, on Saturday from ten thirty to one, one thirty. I'll repeat it. I, on Saturday from ten thirty to one or one thirty, there'll be an open house at the Round Schoolhouse. Lori Almatucci is going to help me set it up and in memory or in honor of her mother. And we will be postponing memorial garden design until springtime. Okay, um.
Uh, so it's, uh, ten thirty to one?
Ten thirty to one, yes. Okay. Anything else? Under any other reports or discussions from the select board? No?
No.
Okay, uh, under new business, uh, budget season planning for town meetings, um. I do have a question from the Brooklyn Meeting House. Is there any possibility for having town meeting at the meeting house in the next year or two? Is that something the select board would like to see in the next year?
No, I was, well.
Uh, definitely, definitely offensive.
Using that meeting house.
Too small. It's uncomfortable, it's too small. That's my opinion.
You're, I'm talking, you're talking about, not, not to be anymore, it's a very much.
Addition.
Addition.
Definitely.
Addition? Yes.
Uh, I would, I would feel that's.
The addition is too small then. And the sanctuary is not suited for that time of the year.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, the goal would be at some point to be able to have a building that can be used.
That goal, it was six, seven years ago and no one took me seriously on it, but I went going for forward. Explanation because it's eight thirty.
Okay. All right.
Um, that's that.
All right.
My opinion.
Okay, um, budget seasoning planning for town meeting twenty twenty-three. How do we wanna approach this in the next coming months?
Well, next, next meeting is the nineteenth. Well, I guess we have to, we have to contact Melissa and get reports. Yeah, I've got it. She's been giving us reports every month. She hasn't given to us this month. She kinda get a little looser with it. First thing we need to have is our budget reports. Then we have to work, 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 uh, pretty well, your worksheets. So I would say, my guess, we gotta start pretty, pretty quickly.
So we're looking at November second?
A little later than.
My.
Okay, November second, please.
What suggestions?
We actually start at nineteen, but we're not gonna put that.
We might add, we might add a couple of things we can talk about on the nineteenth. Um, okay, now. But on the, uh, on the October and the November second meeting.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, I do have another item here. Um, all right. As you're aware, the Brooklyn Meeting House put out bids and, and had an approval for putting in some storm windows at the meeting house. The local vendor was not able to due to COVID shortages and, uh, returned the, refunded the deposit that we sent. There was a second bid for windows that was received at the same time from a company called Allied, which is in O'Koyle. Uh, Dan Tyler has reached out to them to see if they were still interested in, in providing the, with storm windows. He basically got a response that they would definitely like to be supportive of this and actually have offered a twenty percent discount off of all eleven windows from the retail price. The total cost would be five thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars, of which three thousand dollars is a gift from David Shucks Foundation. Uh, the outlook if approved, if, if given the go-ahead would be eighteen weeks and so it would be sometime in the spring. Can the Brooklyn Meeting House engage in, uh, this procedure considering that they have a, the second bidder is still interested in this?
This is for the sanctuary?
This is for the whole building. They will do all eleven windows for five thousand three hundred, not installed, however, this is not installation. They would, that measure, manufacture and deliver them. And then the meeting house would have to, uh, get an installation of the windows. Um, and it is um, uh. Estimated twenty percent off. It's, they're called invisible storm windows. Um, they are, uh, used in, highly recommended by the presentation.
Okay, but.
Yes.
But, 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 but I wrote this up before. I thought we understood this. It's right in Jan's report and they can read that nothing should be done to the windows externally in terms of storm windows until it's analyzed by a specialist what to do about the mold problem. Because you're enhancing the problem by doing that. As well as I love to save money, we all know how much I love to save money, but it's going at a turn. So, and so, uh, if you wanna keep them on hold, have a specialist and, yes. That works. Name is Gaddick. I don't have the report in front of me. That, uh, was highly recommended, but before we did anything to that building, that it was analyzed by a specialist to do the control. The, uh, the mold issue it was in. And a part of that of statement was in the report that it's not recommended that you're plastic on on, on the ground underneath the church because of the, what is the term you use? Uh, it's called the creeping up of the walls of the moisture, of the moisture up the walls. So bottom line is, before anything's done with the windows, we have to have specialists understand what, what, just quite know what to do about the mold remediation. And that doesn't come from me. That comes from Jan Womack.
So you say no, that they cannot move forward?
I wouldn't do anything until, until somebody looks at that building. I, I believe I mentioned that at one point. Um, and I think I mentioned to you, Don, before, when we had a chat on the phone, they asked questions for a meeting and I brought that up. Um, and it's, and I'm not butchering it if you missed it or forgot about it, or you have missed, forget a lot of things. But still, it doesn't change the issue. The issue is, um, the mold and we don't have a professional answer to it. That's basically another reason why we can't panic pay at the sanctuary until we come to a, a, a solution as to what to do with that. Part of that issue, I believe, it's my opinion, is the heat, a lack of heat in the building. Although it's approved because we've been opening up the building a lot more. And this has been going on for a number of years now. We've been opening up the building a lot more and it's helping the mold issue. But Bruce isn't a specialist. Bruce doesn't know the ins and outs of this type of situation of a whole storm building. And someone should be in there, looking at that building and saying you need to do or not to. Or maybe they'll say it's okay to go to a storm. But Jan's specifically said in, in, in the, uh, in the analysis back in twenty thirteen, nothing.
I think Stan, you also have a firsthand activity that you worked on washing mold off the ceiling at one point.
I watch him do it.
Yeah. And I would mind helping. You know, probably not this winter, but next spring, you know, in preparation for viewing season in summer. You know, watching it much off. But it gets it off me too. So that's, that's the other thing. It wears it that we can't see. You know, it's, it, those are, I don't know how well they're constructed. Maybe Carrie does, being a contractor.
Classic.
Uh, I mean, Carrie has an opinion about that it was very popping. I do recall those kinds of verbiage in the, in the document that, uh, I don't even mention it.
Stan, move down.
Move down, Stan did. Uh, it's probably in there. I have copies of it somewhere in my house.
If anybody needs it, I have it in home.
And so I, I would, I, I think maybe the polite thing to do is just ask them in light of what we brought up this evening by, by Bruce, that there may be a concern and have they looked into that? And, you know, I told my rhythm, not tomorrow.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying deep six windows. What I'm saying is that has to be done.
That, that, the, so that board and.
Cause it'll be done next week.
Maybe they can reduce the building and reduce mold growth.
Right.
That should be inspected and.
Right, we might have it inspected next week. That'll work.
Yeah, it's, it's a, just making a prudent decision based on.
Exactly.
An accurate thing.
Exactly.
Are we gonna hurt the building? Are they gonna hurt the building or, or, or is everybody doing the right thing? Just reflect on that. Did they consider it? Maybe they didn't, who knows?
Okay.
You know, I never.
As I said, but I, I, they're mentioning about the wiping off. And I had, I had quite a discussion with Mo Mommy about this, who looked inside of this sanctuary four years ago. The whole, the whole inside of the main street. Such a nuts.
Oh, yeah.
Cannot be painted. Every inch of that wall, those walls have to be remediated of, of, has to be washed. Which and not forget the other, what else, T S N, you have to care what else you need to get to clean it up. But I'm done with my.
Okay. All right, fair enough. I'm gonna try to move on then, uh, into old business. I'm gonna table the discussion of administration.
May I have a number? Uh, the gift from David Sutton was, uh, three thousand?
The gift of David Sutton was, uh, uh, three thousand dollars towards.
Windows.
Farm windows.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, move on to old business. I'm going to table the discussion of the administrative assistant. Even though I can tell you, I did talk to Juanita and, and have some very interesting information, but Stan and I, if we get together, I'll share that with you and we'll bring that up.
Okay.
Um, let's also table any park appropriation discussions and move on to communications. Very quickly, we already talked about the Emerald Ash Core. I will contact them to see if there is any grants coming about that. Uh, I also wanted to let you know that the Newburgh Fire Department next year will be celebrating its seventy-fifth anniversary. And so we'll be hearing some things about that. Um, Stan, you said that there was an email that we received and that there was a sub recipient report that's delinquent. We got a letter and, and you wrote to Melissa about that. I just wanted to put in the record that that's something that she needs to do, correct?
She's done it.
Okay.
She found the report that she filed. She apparently got a receipt notification back that it was received. For some reason, Mr. Sorensen at D-Trans is not aware of that. But all of this conversation was sent to Mr. Sorensen. And, uh, I wanted to give him an afternoon to gather his thoughts on this and put his emails together, not knowing what kind of focus he is for other people and just tomorrow, email them and say, I was ready to the same emails you are. Are we all set now? So we get in right.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, and let's see, regular mail. I'm gonna pass out. We don't need to read this, but this is a photocopy of mail from Gary Blair about occupying the D U camp uh, on Grassley Brook Road.
Needing some.
So follow up with that. Um. Review and approve minutes from September seventh, regular and September seventh, emergency meeting.
You were gonna finish it.
December twenty, twenty-one. What?
I didn't know. I went past it.
Twenty-one.
Everything to do with.
Twenty-one.
Emergency meetings?
I was wondering if we could, if we should postpone the approval of the minutes because they were not posted for five days online. Either set of minutes, like emergency minutes. I ended up, I forgot to send you guys, but we have copies of it. So I'm gonna ask to postpone the approval of the emergency meeting, which occurred when I found the bid for the Brooklyn Meeting House. Remember I found the bid in the mailbox after we.
Yeah.
Of the meeting, Tom, that tabled this. And I'm gonna also table the draft minutes from September twenty-first because they were not posted for the past five days in case there was somebody in the community that wanted to come. Uh, so that will be moved, moved out, okay? Uh, setting the agenda for October nineteen, one. Letter of support for the seventh project. Number two, discuss the cost of winter gravel. Number three, the Putney Mountain paving situation. Number four, review culvert policy. Number five, discuss signage in town that needs repair. Number six, window regional commission discussion. Number seven, mold remediation. Number eight, budget planning.
This is all I can.
Yeah.
We may even wanna put in there discussing the outcome of our discussions with all state regarding the issue of if they're to perform.
Yeah, Putney Mountain community, yes.
Oh, was that here?
Yes.
I missed it.
And we're holding the checks. Uh, anything else we can do at another time? Um, or add to it. So I will allow me to.
Did we, and we're gonna, you got winter gravel here. Was the salt also on the agenda for next time?
Salt. Salt cost, thank you. Thank you, and add the last, salt. Um. And then I would like to move that we adjourn the meeting this evening. May I have a second? I did my Bruce, so all the favor of his journey. Can I say hi?
Hi.
Hi. Meeting is adjourned and it is eight forty-four.